Good job. David Sealy. Call to order. Notices hereby given in accordance to general law thirty nine, section twenty three A, that a regular meeting of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, L R A, will be held on Wednesday, August twentieth, at six P M. The meeting will be held at two fifty five Exit Street, first floor, Lawrence, Mass., oh one eight four zero, pursuant of Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the L R A is also being conducted via remote participation. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by using the following I D below. Roll call.
Pedro Tejada. Ramon Casada.
President.
Ana Medina.
Mr. Eric Walker.
President.
Uh. Section one, request for the Downtown Lawrence Association for additional grant funding for the downtown festivals. We all set on this?
Yeah. We voted on this one already.
Right. Was this amendment part of this or no?
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Um. Brian, are you on?
Yeah.
Howdy, howdy.
Hello.
Hello.
Trying to get you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
So the first item on the agenda, I mean, we voted on this item before. What is the, uh, what is your request here as for the contract?
The, uh. The, the, the amendment was not, um. Was not on the agenda, uh, the last time, so, uh. I know that we, we heard, we heard from the, um, I think we heard from, uh, Joel Lopez, uh, from the Downtown Association. Uh, we talked a little bit about it, um. But it really wasn't an official, uh, uh, business item because it wasn't on the agenda, so. Uh, out of an abundance of passion, I, I, I suggest if we just hold off until this, this meeting, get it on the agenda. Uh, maybe just summarize Octavian, uh, what, what, uh, what's going on there. I mean, I, from, from my vantage point, I think, uh, from what, from what I learned. The, uh, Downtown Association, uh, received some money from the city a couple of years ago, but, but basically, uh, used most of it, if not all of it, uh. And was not in a position to fund. Uh, really in any capacities of festival, so. The original ask was for the L R A to do fifty percent, and then the Downtown Association would do fifty percent. And then it turns out they do not have the ability to fund fifty percent, so the L R A is being asked to fund all of the festival, um. I'm not su- I can't recall the amount that, uh, being asked.
Oh, yes, I, I re- Brian, I, I can take it from here, so I recall the extent was the, the issue with the Downtown Association, you're the chairperson?
Uh, it's actually Wakidya.
Wakidya, but she's not gonna be here, but at least you can respond. I think one of, uh, the issue that the Downtown Association encountered was that they were requested by the city or through the mayor to, uh, uh, place additional planters, more expenses in the maintenance of, 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 uh, that assignment as well as more lights.
The lighting and then the maintenance of the lighting was a factor, and some of these invoices, even though they were sent, they weren't actually paid. So when we, uh, looked at it, uh, some invoices were outstanding, that's where we realized that there wasn't funds.
Yeah, that was available, but anyway, we can always check it through the city as well. But in order for them, for us to proceed with the, the event, they're asking for an additional, um, you know, to, uh, additional, more or less, less than thirty forty thousand, so it comes up to hundred and twenty. That was the, the number that we came with. Uh, for, um, actually for events. Um, but in discussions with, uh, Joel, they said it would be more convenient this year for, because of the, the short notice.
Short window to, to coordinate four events, and then before the summer ends would have been impossible, so we decided to do one larger event and really make it stand out so that next year we could now have the ability to showcase it and go after our sponsorships and things like that.
Okay, so we will, and, and this is the, and I want to make it clear. Um, so we, we budgeted for hundred and twenty, so adding the additional dollars to make it hundred and twenty, so in this case, it's, uh, hundred, it's thirty eight. Let me see how much it's gonna be.
Twenty by four.
It's one twenty minus eighty one thousand five hundred, which has been. How much? Thirty eight point five would be the additional funds to, to make it, uh, around figure a hundred and twenty. And then every time that they have an expense or, uh, it would go, any line items that would come before us, just like in this case tonight, for the insurance, they have proof that they have, uh, to show that I think it's hundred ninety five dollars. And then we will add, I think, uh, El Mundo I also received, but those are, are, um, items that could be, could be, uh, execute, I mean, we can bank the payments once the board, uh, approve the additional funding. So what we'll do, we'll make sure that, uh, that we scrutinize, in this case, uh, the funding, how it's been used. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow, eleven A M.
With, um, Joel, we continue to have subsequent other meetings as well. Uh, and the line of communication is, is, is there, so, um. Uh, Mr. Chair, I recommend for you to make motions for, uh, an additional thirty eight thousand five hundred.
To, to make it go.
Hundred, hundred and twenty, yeah.
I, I want to entertain a motion to that effect on the board.
Chair, I made through you.
Yes.
I'm looking at a proposal here for the festival, I don't know if this is old, that's, that's fifty seven thousand seven hundred and fifty, Downtown Lawrence Association. And then it has the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, fifty seven thousand.
That's the original.
That's the original proposal, okay, just wanna, wanna make that clear.
Funding is the thirty eight that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've already proved the, the first round, so to make it possible, we need to prove, as, as Octavian said, to make it to four hundred and twenty thousand.
What?
Hundred and twenty as a whole.
The full amount will be the hundred and twenty.
So the goal is three events, one large one, which.
No, just one large one.
At this point, it'll be one large event.
Because of the sake of time.
Yeah.
And any, any funds, if any, left over would be rolled over to next year's event.
The twenty twenty six. Got it. Makes sense.
For the chairs.
Yes.
Joe has a question for you.
Sure.
Do we have an idea of when you guys want to do it?
No, we, that we have, so we, we've already started conversation, pulling permits, so it's gonna be September thirteenth, which is a Saturday. It's gonna take place, the festival itself will be from one P M to seven P M. And I did send you guys a press release short notice, but that's just one internal, we still gotta, we haven't sent to media yet. So, so Saturday, September thirteenth, from one to seven, uh, will be the actual festival. We've already done the walkthrough with the city, so they know that the downtown will be closed down super early, there's gonna be signings, so the vendors can come in instead of.
That's a hard day.
Yeah. Well, after the vote, we're gonna have other discussions as well.
Sure. I need a. I need a. If we have any other discussion, I would, like I said, entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I, uh, make a recommendation?
Yes, please.
I believe in the original, uh, discussion and in the grant agreement that, uh, the, uh, the L R A signed with, with Downtown Association. The idea was that the L R A was gonna fund, uh, this initial festival in twenty twenty five, whether it was gonna be a, 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 a series of smaller events or maybe a big event. And then in twenty twenty six, the, uh, the burden of, 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 uh, funding the, the festivals was gonna shift back to the association. And so I would recommend that, uh, that the, the L R A agree that, uh, it will fund fully the festival for this year. And then whatever's left over will be returned to the L R A, you can always revisit funding future events in twenty twenty six. But I just don't want there to be a commitment going forward to be funding events, because I think that the, the burden of that should shift back to the private sector.
Correct. Uh, uh, thank you, Brian. So what does that, what does that look like in terms of the money from us?
No, in subsequent years, this is pretty easy, these guys are making, in the Downtown, I, I don't mean the Downtown Association. The businesses are making money.
Yes.
Okay? And, uh, but I do understand that they are employers as well, and they pay the taxes, some of them own the properties, some of them don't. But, uh, it is our responsibility in terms of a redevelopment authority to make sure that there's ways that we can also promote the Downtown Lawrence, because there's where most of our redevelopment activities happen. And that is the purpose, the purpose is not to just have, you know, entertain an event. But in subsequent years, and this is, the intent was to make this a pilot project for the Downtown Association to assume the responsibility in the future as to how they are going to organize it, because that's the reason why they exist. We have met with them, uh, I think, uh, four years ago. We met with you guys almost four years, the first conversation, uh, they did receive funding through the grant. Uh, and I think they did a good job with, uh, with the, uh, downtown, what do you call it, the baskets and the flowers. It, it helped uplift the downtown, uh, the lights at night. Uh, it, it sends a signal, uh, the mayor is also satisfied with that, and our collaboration is going perfect, uh, well so far. But they do have to assume their responsibility, the Downtown Association, to, uh, work with, with the downtown, uh, merchants and to make sure that they contribute i- in subsequent other events. How they are gonna manage it, that is up to them, that's not our, you know, we don't mandate anything, the city is responsible, they need to work as an organization.
Okay.
Motion, do you entertain a motion?
We voted for the additional thirty eight.
Yes.
Total of one twenty, what's not used for this will be returned.
And then we'll revisit back in twenty twenty six. I like that. You wanna make this motion for me? So move, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
The Tejada.
Hi.
Ramon Casada.
Yes.
Ana Medina. Eric Walker.
Hi, motion carries, thank you.
The, uh, well, I can do that into my report, but, uh, Mr. Chair can, um, there is an agreement that I need to, that we need to execute.
Okay.
Um, and it's been drafted, but I think we haven't signed it yet.
Oh, we signed it our end, not sure if it's been signed on your end, but.
Okay, um, Brian, did we, this hasn't been.
Have you? We did a digital signature, I believe Johan sent it out, digital signature.
To who?
I thought he sent it out to Brian, no.
You got, uh, I did, I did receive Joel's, uh, signature on behalf of the association, uh, now that there's a, a revised amount, I'll prepare, uh, an amendment, or Octavian, if you haven't already signed it, I'll just do a new agreement with the, uh, higher amount and make sure the provision is clear that, you know, whatever's not used, uh, in terms of funding in twenty twenty five will be returned. And then revisited twenty twenty six, I'll, I'll prepare that and have that ready for that meeting tomorrow morning when, uh, we do the meeting by Zoom.
Okay, perfect. I haven't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Chair, I made through you.
Yes.
Uh. Do we have an insurance certificate issued to the L R A and also the City of Lawrence, are they, are these here?
No, because you guys haven't had the, this is not, you guys don't have insurance yet.
Well, so we sent the, the certificate of insurance, we're just waiting, uh, agency's just waiting for payment. So the revised, uh, copy was sent over, I believe, yesterday. Okay, so I believe that's the revised copy.
Okay, what about the city, is included in this one?
I'm sorry, when you say the city.
The City of Lawrence.
As I believe the City of Lawrence should be.
Uh, I haven't seen it, so we need to, um.
Please specifically to.
The additional and the third.
So that, so just to, because this is a first, right, so we're, what we wanna do is make sure the City of Lawrence is the, uh, insured. So what do they have?
For the Downtown Lawrence Association.
Downtown Lawrence Association, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's not currently, uh, City of Lawrence. Sorry, I don't have the copy.
I think in the contract it says, in the contract it says in item five. Okay. Um.
Okay, so it says Downtown.
Should be the.
Yeah, you know what, in the preparation, um, Brian, on item five.
Yes.
I think we should, we should also include the City of Lawrence.
Okay.
Of the contract.
Okay. No problem.
Thanks. Okay, but we can take care of that.
I'll take care of it.
And we'll get the certificate from now.
If you guys want, for the sake of time, to get it done, just go ahead and pay it and you get reimbursed.
No, no, that's fine. I just, it's gotta make sure it says the City of Lawrence on there, which doesn't, doesn't look like it says the City of Lawrence.
Yeah, but they, that's gonna for the certificate.
Okay. Okay, I have it, thanks.
But we, we have to wait for Mr. Corrigan to make the changes here, so they can be specific as to what the needs are. Just go ahead and bind that and I guess.
Then we can get a check.
L R A can reimburse you for that, but.
Yeah, tomorrow.
That's important, so, you know, no one gets hurt in the city, that's why the L R A.
Okay, perfect, good.
And, and just so the board knows, uh, in response to, uh, Ramon's, uh, comments, uh, I believe we've already started funding the, uh, I believe we've already started funding the project based on the signature on the original agreement, but, but certainly, um, we're, we're ready, we're ready to start funding, uh, all the expenses, paying the expenses.
Okay. Uh, number two. All right. All right. So number two, we have the sale of three hundred Canal Street.
Yes, so.
Yeah. Thank you guys, have a good night.
No, thank you.
Yes, I've, um, I'm. Brian Corrigan and myself and, um, uh, Mr. Seidel. Gary Seidel of Bell Towers, um, we have hired his services um, in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars to give us a, basically, um, a broker's price opinion uh, for the sale of three hundred, uh, Canal. Okay? Um, as we have discussed, uh, in previous meetings, we said that we will start looking at all the, the properties uh, owned by the L R A, and we wanted to see if the, um, property, um, the only issue that we have is that we can't put a price on a place that we just renovated. We need to have a, a person, a company give us more or less.
You need an appraisal to set a price.
Yes, to set a price.
Yeah.
So that's basically it. Um, but, um, and once it's, uh, that we get the, um, appraisal and what we can, and also an opinion on what we can sell the property, then it would be presented to you as a board to make a decision whether to set, if this, the sell or to, uh, to lease the property. But that would come together with all the remaining properties. I'm reviewing, uh, and together with Brian, Brian already provided me with a list of properties, I went through them yesterday, but I need to visit, and maybe I can encourage, uh, the board as well to accompany me. Maybe you can assign someone that are two board members that can go with me, we can look at the property, see the condition of the properties. Um, most, um, of, of these lots are basically already used by the park or by the Department of Education, if I'm not mistaken. There are easements, there are alleyways, and, but, um, I'm also considering a recommendation made by Brian Corrigan to, uh, which is to the extent of maybe we owe the city two million dollars, and these properties in total are assessed at three million dollars, three million plus. And maybe we can negotiate a deal, but we're not there yet. So the only issue that I'm trying to, uh, uh, I wanted to bring before you is the fact that we have hired, um, Bell Towers Commercial Real Estate Group in order for us to, to give as a broker's, uh, price figure.
Chair.
Yes. On the price of the, uh, from Bell Tower, from the other, uh, appraiser company that did all the appraisals for the, um, urban development, they were a little less than half. The other guy, the other company wanted thirty seven hundred dollars, I have it. I thought that was a great price, I did tell one of the.
Yeah, really, yeah. And, uh, so my. Yeah, uh, Brian, do you wanna add anything else?
No, I think, uh, I think we've, we, we farmed out, uh, the work to probably the most knowledgeable guy in the city, uh, with regard to commercial real estate, and, um, I look forward to getting his opinion and, and to seeing what, how much money the L R A can make off of that unit hydro.
Chair, I made through you.
Yes.
I think, uh, you know, I like the idea that Mr. Spanner's presenting, and I, I know the, uh, Bell Tower Group, uh, very well, I think they're local and, and, uh, they're experts in that field, so I, you know, personally, I feel very comfortable trying to assess three hundred Canal and trying to figure out what we're gonna do with that site. Investment was made and, and we gotta find the best option for generating some, some revenue for the L R A at this point.
Correct. Thank you.
I think it's responsible to know what it, what it's worth. Um, you know, and so we can make a, a, a good decision on what the next steps is, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I thank, uh, Brian as well for helping me out with this.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, number three, we have the R F P for development of the city owned parcels pursuant to the Lawrence to be determined urban renewal plan.
Brian, you brought this up? What are you referring to, do you mean the, uh? These were the parcels, these are the par- parcels owned by the L R A?
Yeah, you know, um, I, I know we, obviously, this is probably the biggest thing that the L R A has going right now, um, you know, the, you know, the work that's been done and the, the matter that's before the city council, it just seemed to me that there wasn't a, uh, an agenda item, uh, an old business agenda item that, that completely, uh, covered what's going on, so I, I just recommended to Marisol, just add something to the agenda so that, uh, the topic can be discussed and, and, you know, nobody can question, you know, that we gave full disclosure, but, I mean, basically, we're, we're before the council right now, um, I think everybody was there, I think Anna, Anna wasn't there, but obviously, uh, heard about uh, what went on at the council last week. We're waiting to hear from the, um, the chairs of the Housing and Economic Development Subcommittee. And, uh, hopefully, we'll get some notice from them and, and get a chance to go, uh, present the individual projects, uh, maybe next week, my hope. But anyways, that was it, I, I just, I thought there was maybe a gap in the agenda, didn't want anyone questioning that we didn't have, uh, something on the agenda that the open meeting law may be violated, so that, that was it. There's nothing specific other than just to update the board on where we stand, and everybody, I think, knows where we stand, 'cause, you know, they're all at the meeting. So that's pretty much it, I, I haven't heard anything new, uh, I haven't heard anything new from the, the council, the city clerk, uh, the city attorney, nobody's reached out to me yet, uh, hoping to get some feedback and, uh, schedule very soon.
Chair, I made through you, uh, Mr. Uh, Corrigan, thank you for bringing this up. Uh, this is really important, we, we should find out who's in housing, uh, and also who's at the economic development level, so we can try to speed up this process. You know, the, the, the ideal way to handle this would be to try to present this maybe in two different meetings. So that we could try, to be thorough, and so we could try to move this along, I think that some of the people in housing are gonna be some of the same city councils, right? Am I correct?
Yes, yes, the, the chair, I know the chair of the Housing Committee is, um.
Vivian.
Vivian Marmel. And the economic development, is it Stephanie? Nufante?
I think Vivian may be the chair of that one as well, I, I took a quick look, the Economic Development Subcommittee hasn't met in, uh, several months, um, does not, hasn't been much activity, but I, I believe Vivian, uh, Marmel may be the, the chair of both, uh, both subcommittees, uh, I can confirm that, though.
Thank you, yeah, if we can get that information, I think, because this is fresh in everyone's minds since Mr. Caris presented this, you know, a few weeks ago. Ideally, we don't wanna waste any time, because we went through, through the projects and, and, and we presented them with the plans and the amount of units and, and everything broken down, so that, so that we can move, move quick on this.
I agree. I, I will have a meeting with the, with the city attorney, um, on Monday. Um, and I told, uh, Brian that my, one of the recommendations, if we don't hear anything by next week, then we should proceed with a letter that, um, from the L R A attorney to the city attorney requesting the status, to know the status, and the city clerk, basically, what's, what's the, the status of our request. Uh, in the meantime, there's also, um, we are still going to try to, to, uh, see if we can, you know, have, uh, continue to convince the city councillors, um, but, um, that is more on a political level.
Understood. I think that's all we have for new business. Uh, do we have anything else, board?
Um. Not from our end. We. Maybe for the next agenda, we should discuss, you know, the, the move.
Yes.
Of the L R A.
Put that under new business, that's for next.
Put it on the new business, yeah.
Yep, okay.
And if all, if you may have any, any agenda items that you would like to discuss, then we can.
Plus it'll give time.
Yeah, we have time.
Developing things to move its way through the city council and through the mayor's office.
Right, once we hear word, then we will bring it to, to your attention.
Okay.
New chair.
Yep.
Is that, I should, uh, any, any new agenda item, should we email Marisol?
Yes, yeah, the chair, bring it to the chair, to the chair, not, not available, the vice chair, and then, um, you folks let me know.
Our communication's pretty good, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, oh, and one other thing that I would like to say, the, if I, can I, can I address the other item on number one, even though we, they voted on it? I just wanted to, as part of my report, as part of my executive director report. Um, in regards to the downtown development, uh, time is running out. And we are gonna make sure that this is not, this is a success. I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow, uh, and I told Joel as well, uh, because we're not going to expand certain funds that would not be, uh, that is going to be a failure.
Right.
They had sufficient time to organize themselves, as a matter of fact, this is an initiative that basically is their responsibility, their initiative. We're trying to push it, uh, but we are going to ensure by all means that we, that, that our community is informed, especially those that are basically living within the downtown area. I want to give you the assurances that we're gonna make sure that that, that happens.
Bring all resources to bear to make it be successful.
We brought in Jill, uh, to talk about, uh, I mean, also has met with them with the Downtown Association to see, um, how they can, we can bring, uh, a collaborative agreement for the downtown area, because that is, that is, that's, that's gonna. That's that's gonna help us. Get more retail. More business within the, within the commercial um. Uh establishment or or uh spaces that we're gonna create within on Methuen Street. On Common Street and also in the downtown area.
Right.
And this is, mind you, right now, there's seventeen projects, development project in the city. It's not only the eight, uh the the LRA only is managing eight projects. But it's an additional nine projects that are pending. Some of them I can mention is the Relief Inn. Uh that's a residential project, we have uh the Arturo Merlino's. Property, which is behind. The train station next to the concrete place. That's another development, they're talking about three hundred units. We're talking about Salapoli with two hundred and fifty units. That is already went before initial uh discussions before the planning board. Um we have the uh. There's another tentative project on Berkeley, on Berkeley Street.
Hmm.
Two different separate development. We have another one on Essex Street that is led by Ray. That is uh next to, is it common, I said, I think it's Essex Street, right? Or Common Street, Lowell Street. Lowell Street, that is also another development with another two hundred units, plus units. So we put all these projects together, they're around seventeen.
The total probably sounds almost like over a thousand units.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Uh and Tom Morello is another project that we're trying to push. Uh and we'll see, you know, what what the city is gonna decide, whether it's gonna leave planning and development to do it. Or if it's gonna be put in the LRA's. Contingent upon the the new urban renewal uh uh plan, the major amendment.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Okay. Chair, I made through you, should we decide who's gonna be visiting the properties with.
Oh, yes.
With Mr. Banner?
We should.
Because those things are sitting there. Collecting dust and rubbish and everything else. And we should put them in the hands of maybe the abotters, or put them in the hands of the of the city. So we can pay back that debt that we have sitting on our books.
Can we organize a tour, we give a man, and we can kinda, who's available can go, and we can check them off the list?
How many units, how many properties, have you any idea?
They're like, uh what, how many, how many properties, um?
Uh. Well, they're pr- probably, I, maybe fifteen, sixteen. Uh separate parcels, but uh many of them are like uh, you know, bunched into like one site. So I'd say uh you're probably looking at five or six uh individual sites. Uh across the city, and so it's um, you know, it's, you you probably would need much more than an hour. Or so to uh, you know, make the rounds and kinda see, see what we're dealing with and. You know, what's what's the rounding, the parcels and stuff, and again, uh we've got that spreadsheet that uh I circulated, I think, last month. So take a look at that. Got some photographs and maps and stuff.
Yeah, I had a question. I thought there were more. Because I have another list.
Okay, uh happy to, happy to look at the other list.
Okay, I think there there was another list that I, that that I I had, but unfortunately, Brian, I I didn't have time, but. We can, I can send it to you, but in the meantime, we can visit those.
I'm available Tuesday after midday. Tuesday, Wednesday I'm available, next next Wednesday I'm available all day.
You're available?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday I'll go back to school. Next Tuesday.
But you don't take off?
No, we're going back, then you you start. New year.
Summer done.
Summer done.
Summer is over.
And you're you too, right?
Monday.
Yeah, I'm starting back Monday, so we're geared.
Either, either Thursday, Friday, or Monday.
No, tomorrow is not, I think, next week. Listen, if if you guys can't go, then we go.
What about you, Pedro? Wednesday, I'm only off.
If we can, can we get a a video of it so that we can all kinda have eyes on, so that.
Yes.
Yeah. Those of us who can't make it.
Okay, we do it, um right, Pedro, can you make yourself available Wednesday?
You guys let me know when.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What time?
Uh maybe eleven?
Done, me.
Right, Wednesday, ele- at eleven o'clock, okay? Sounds good, appreciate you.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll take a video meditation.
There's pictures that that that, Brian did a good job, he linked some of the pictures, but it's good to have a video, so you guys know exactly what's in it's around.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Who you meet?
Uh let's meet um, let's meet at City Hall, the parking lot. Right, okay, okay.
It's a bit, really. It's um. Sorry, is that, is the uh Holy Rosary building part of it, no, right, or we did it?
No, Holy Rosie is not part of it, because, oh, I think James is on on the uh online. Uh James, are you, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, James. Yeah, welcome, uh James. The, my question to you is, in regards to the second minor amendment, have you heard from? From uh, from the state?
I I have to send, and I'm finishing it now, and I'll send it in the morning. A revised spreadsheet in terms of the two properties. One is the public school property, and the other is the police station. Uh so they needed some adjustment, and so I'm sending the revised spreadsheet uh tomorrow morning. I've been out all this week, and I I just got back this afternoon.
Okay, the second question would be, what what, um so in the major amendment, what? We, uh what's the name, Summer Street, one hundred Summer Street? Be part of it?
The, ho- hold on one second, let me look here. The, what I have with a second minor amendment is one hundred Summer Street. Um and that is. The public school property.
So it was submitted with a second minor amendment?
That's what we're, right, the revises we're submitting, and the second will be the uh. Police station on ninety Lowell Street. So those are the two that we agreed to submit. And uh we should hear back from her pretty quickly.
Okay.
And the rest, there were, there were uh. Seven other properties that we were looking at, but we had decided to hold off on those and just go for the two, the police station, the school site.
Thank you. Any other update that you wanna talk about, um James?
Uh just very quickly on the major amendment, uh as I had indicated last meeting. During the summer, I've been spending time to interview as many key stakeholders as possible. I think we're about uh twenty-two have responded, and twenty-two interviews have been conducted. Um city councillors, unfortunately, we only have. Two. City councillors that have been interviewed. One has told us they will want to reschedule, but we haven't heard back from them. But we have a good cross-section of community representatives, city officials, LRA board members. Uh city, city councillors uh as as uh key stakeholder interviews. Then in the fall, we'll work with you to come up with a schedule. For major meetings, community meetings that will be held in the evening, and also on a Saturday.
Good. Okay, thank you, James. Any questions?
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, James.
So we can.
Okay, uh entertain a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, probably second roll call.
Pedro. Ramon.
Hi.
Anna. And Eric.
All right, thank you all very much, James, Brian.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.